Meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Our clerk is anticipated to be a few minutes late tonight in her absence. Be happy to take any motions for someone to take temporary clerkship, I guess.
Motion for Treasurer Rice.
To support.
Have a motion by Smith, support by Bills, for Treasurer Rice to play that role until our clerk arrives. Thank you for being willing, I'm assuming?
Yes, that's fine.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion for Treasurer Rice to sit in for our clerk till she arrives? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, Treasurer Rice.
You're welcome.
Would you please do a roll call of the board?
All right. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Thering is excused. Clerk Cody is excused for now. Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Treasurer Rice here. All but two.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
We have an agenda in front of us. Happy to entertain motions.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. We have no presentations tonight. We do, however, have a public hearing. This is in regards to our fiscal year 2024 budget. Do we need to take a motion to actually open this public hearing, or?
No, but you should officially open it with the time.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll open up public hearing on the fiscal 2024 budget at 7:02 PM. And just a note, if anybody's going to address the public, please state your name and address for the record.
We have no one online.
So seeing no one virtually, no one here, jumping forward. A quick ask the board, this is on our agenda tonight as well, but in case you wanted to use this opportunity now to say anything. So seeing no public input. We'll close the public hearing at 7:02 PM. Which takes us to public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Again, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:03 PM.
Still empty room.
Still no one virtually, and still it appears no one in person, jumping forward. Seeing no public input. We will close public comment at 7:03 PM. That brings us to item nine on the agenda, report board's comments. Item A. We do have some new applicants, which I was glad to see. With, I believe, all the boards we have appointments for, with the exception of the sidewalk committee, which we don't have an applicant for at this point. They all, the terms all end in, end of this year. I misspoke. With the exception of the ZBA, we had that one open seat for some time. So I'm happy to entertain any motions with that. I'm also comfortable waiting until our December meeting. I'll leave it up to this board if they feel moved to take somewhat action.
Well, I'd like to make one motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion Rodney Nanning to be appointed to a three-year term on the Mount Pleasant Airport Joint Operations and Management Board, year ending 12/31/2026.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills. Comments?
He's a good candidate.
Very good.
I was gonna say, I know him too, and I think he's done a good job so far on there.
All-around good guy.
So for the public that may watch this later who don't know, Mr. Nanny is a director in the township and is sitting in this building tonight. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Nanny to the airport board, term ending, what'd you say, 12/31/2026? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thanks for serving. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could keep going, but if we want to just finish up the ones in December, we can. I don't have.
Finish it in December?
My only preference of that is we may get additional.
Yeah, may get additional because.
I won't be here.
And I won't be here, just so you know.
Yes, we're too light now.
We're too light now.
Either way.
So hopefully we'll have form then. I'm gonna go do it in December.
I'm still good with waiting.
Okay.
That's okay with you?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. But as a reminder, sidewalk committee.
We need somebody.
We still need somebody. We have the activity report, any comments? Moving on to item 9C on our agenda. Planning Commission, EDA, ZBA updates by our Community and Economic Development Director, and also Airport Board. Trustee, I'm not sure what your proper title is on that, but.
Appointee.
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 Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the reappointment. Looking forward to serving another term on that board. We'll talk about some other boards right now. A very long time ago, it feels like now, the Zoning Board of Appeals met on November 1st. They had, they did not have any applications. This was kind of a housekeeping meeting. They approved their calendar for next year. They adopted their annual report that they make to the Planning Commission of their activities. And they also had a discussion on training. Some training topics and opportunities for ZBA training. So that was the extent of their activities. The, we had a meeting of the Economic Development Authority Board on the 21st. And they had a couple of business items on their agenda. One is, they did have their annual approval of the participation in the festival banners. These are the banners that go up on our streetlights along Pickard Road every year. And they did approve that participation for next year. We're looking forward to having the full slate of banners for the coming year. This past year, we only had the short stretch on Isabella Road north of Pickard and the short stretch of Pickard east of the expressway. So once again, we have all of our streetlights, and so we'll get to enjoy the full set of banners. The other item on their agenda is kind of a sad item. Doug Small Engine Repair has been our service provider for plowing the sidewalks in the East EDA District and more recently in the West EDA District as well for many years. They have decided not to continue that business. The equipment that they use has reached, frankly, they tell me it's exceeded its design lifetime quite a bit. But it's reached the point where they've decided not to continue trying to repair it. And they've decided not to replace it. So they are ending their service with us with the end of the calendar year. So the EDA Board did solicit bids from a number of other potential providers of that service. We did receive two bids for that service. And after looking at bids, the EDA Board selected Johnny's Lawn Care, which is out of, just north of town, as the new provider for that service. So they will be starting basically January 1st at the New Year, providing that snowplow service for us. Those were the business items for the EDA. Planning Commission also met that same day, the 21st. They also had a pretty busy agenda. They had a final site plan for a project just down the street here on Remus Road, just east of Lincoln. Nice little project. It's a building addition for indoor golf and archery practice facility, essentially. The second item was another interesting one. Walmart is building a 6,000 square foot addition to their building. This is part of their, they're expanding their service for people to order ahead and pick up on site. This would be a new warehouse, essentially, and pickup area on the south side of the building. As part of that, they're also going to be making some pretty significant improvements to their access points, to north and south access points into that parking lot. They're troublesome, to say the least. We get a lot of complaints about those. And what the Planning Commission saw was a preliminary site plan for that project. And it will include some significant safety improvements to both access points. It's all constructed to be a very nice improvement to the area. The third item on their agenda was related to, indirectly to the road construction on M20. Chris Doyle had received approval some time ago for construction of a new affiliate station at Isabella and East Pickard Road. The M20 road construction project essentially brought that to a halt. They did put their tanks in the ground in accordance with the state permit, but they chose not to move forward with the construction. And in fact, it's an agreement with MDOT that MDOT used their land as a kind of a laydown area as part of the road construction project. So they needed an extension of their final site plan approval. The Planning Commission did grant that as the last item on their agenda. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So are they gonna build it next year?
They are planning to start in the spring.
Okay, excellent.
Is the Walmart building, is that gonna be a drive-through building for that pickup?
It is not. No, it's basically a warehouse. And it'd just be a pickup, parking spaces outside for pickup. Employee comes in and out. I actually saw one of these downstate not too long ago. It's a nice addition, a nice facility. Certainly make it easier for folks that want to have that quick turnaround in and out of the site.
Yeah, you see a lot of businesses going for it.
You said that's on the south side of Walmart?
Right, the south side, between.
There's not a lot of room there currently, right? Between that and Sam's Club, there's a little bit of parking and for, I think, both stores?
Yeah, there's a fair amount of space. There's certainly enough space. They are going to be taking some parking spaces away to do this, but they're not impacting anything that's required.
Then the, you mentioned the traffic lanes, the entrance and exit. So I'm assuming they're not doing that on bluegrass, they're just making the ones that are there more safe?
Exactly.
Okay, that's awesome news. Just a last comment, too. I had the first opportunity to drive down Pickard, I think it was Monday evening at night, without construction vehicles on the road. And it was stunning, beautiful, the lights, the Christmas decorations. It was very evident as soon as I transitioned into the city that that just stops. But it looks amazing. At least in the dark it did.
And also, the Sam's Club gas station is open. That's pretty sweet.
Yes, it is.
It is, at $2.99 a gallon? Yes.
And you can use your Sam's app to do it.
One thing I'll note, just to take one extra moment. The reason that Walmart is doing those improvements to the entrances is actually because of a section of our ordinance, it's section 12.5. And it's called non-conforming sites. And this was something added as part of the ordinance when it was updated in 2020. And what this section says is for, is for sites that were developed before the ordinance, basically before the current site development standards were put into place. That a site plan for improvements to that site, like this building addition, can be approved by the Planning Commission without necessarily upgrading everything. Because frankly, what would normally be the case is that if they came in with that addition under our old ordinance, we would have had to apply all the standards, landscaping, whatever those standards were. You have to fix everything. What this section says is they don't have to bring everything up to the current standards, but they do have to take care of certain priorities. And the number one priority is they have to take care of public safety deficiencies. That's how we got the provisions that were done here for the entrances. And then it has kind of a menu of options, 10 broad categories. And the section says that the site plan has to include improvements in at least three of those 10 categories. And they're things like pedestrian improvements, parking, vehicle access, building improvements, lighting, cleanup of a blighted site, these various broad categories. And in this case, Walmart more than met that with what they're doing. But the public safety provision, like I said, it's number one on that list. And it was number one to get on that plan. And Walmart was very cooperative about that. They recognized from the first time they spoke that there was a need.
Yeah, they've driven to the worksite, too.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, that's great.
Very informative.
All good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 9D on our agenda, Board Member Reports. We're gonna start all the way over here, just in case a clerk shows up.
No report from me.
Okay. Trustee Bills?
Well, you know, I attended a meeting of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners, and that was on November 21st. So the Isabella County Administrator Controller announced that she's signed a lease for the new building, and it's for one year. And they also are signing a contract for $1.3 million for the abatement of the asbestos. And then that's gonna take at least a year.
Oh.
Yep. And then they have to rebuild. So, just to give you an update on that. And they, you know, renewed into new agreement, you know, renewed agreements with the medical examiner and the AID cap, which takes care of eight kids in their early head start program. And Clark Construction, another little add-on for another 53 grand. Still coming out of their contingency and not out of their rebate fund. So they're not behind, but they figure they will probably blow through all of that money by the time it's done in 2025. And they got a lot of, they got, the Day Treatment Operations Center for the, I guess it must be for the juveniles, when they have a program. And so because it's a program, they're getting 75% reimbursement now, up to $516,000. So that, that was good that they got the extra 25% because the detention part of it, they only get 50% reimbursable. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Nothing to add?
Taxes have been committed and folded and stuffed, and we'll be going to the post office tomorrow. So expect those in your mailboxes. I know, so exciting.
The only thing I'll add is Board of Review. If you're not familiar, Board of Review members are required by state law to take a training every two years, which is the term of the office. So I took that today. I think Doug Bell also serves on Board of Review, was in that today. And that gets us ready for the March Board of Review. But we do have the organizational meeting coming up December. Forgive me for not knowing that off the top of my head. 12.
12.
12 is the December Board of Review, but it is not the organizational meeting, which is gonna be in March.
Right, thank you. You're correct. I misspoke.
Normal December Board of Review.
One of the changes in the law that I found interesting in the training is during the March Board of Review, one of the items that we tend to spend a lot of time on is the veterans exemptions.
Yes.
And that is now approved at the federal level, and it doesn't come through the Board of Review anymore.
Ooh, nice.
And that is something that the Board of Review never could really have much say in anyways. If they qualify, they qualify. And if they don't, they don't. That's, it was more of a rubber stamp, if you will. So I think that'll help streamline what the Board of Review has to do. So there may be more time for some muker or something during those long days. That was the suggestion by the trainer today, by the way, was play muker while you're in downtime. We'll see. In any event. We are doing Board Member Reports. Clerk Cody, do you have anything you'd like to offer? Welcome here. So moving on, item 10 on the agenda, Consent Agenda. I do want to point out a couple items, the Fox Meadows informal petition for road assessment, and then the grant agreement, agreement approval for the Rural Development Grant that we received. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any motions.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown, to approve Consent Agenda as provided. Do, who had warrants?
I did. Everything's clear.
Everything's good?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? I'm excited for that Rural Development Grant.
Me, too.
Yes.
Thank you to staff for getting us in the queue on that, and it's nice to be awarded that.
Yes.
I would've picked you out, but I didn't know everybody that was involved, but I knew you were. All in favor of the motion to approve the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent Agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to our new business. Final Budget Amendment, fiscal 2020, fiscal year 2023. Mr. Stuldrad, do you have anything you want to introduce on this?
This is the final, and thank you and good evening, everybody. This is our final budget amendment for fiscal year 2023. We're amending the General Fund, the East EDA Fund, the ARPA Fund, and then the Sewer and Water Fund. Many, many of the adjustments are due to moving projects that we had thought or maybe hoped that we could get to in 2023, moving into 2024. You'll see that in several other funds. The, I will point out, as it relates to the revenue specifically for the General Fund, and again, you'll see this in the other funds, too, the Water and Sewer Fund, you'll see increased interest earnings by a considerable amount due to the increase in interest rates that has been occurring over the last year, year and a half, two years. On the expenditure side, we increased the budget to account for a couple thousand dollars more for the survey project than what we had originally budgeted for. Recall, you approved that agreement some time ago. We're also increased the budget, $1,800. I wanted to point out for the Michigan Township Association, Premium Pass is what they call it. That's an expenditure we make annually that provides training to everybody in the organization, to the extent they want to take it online, in person. So it, I think it's quite, quite the bargain, actually. Also wanted to point out that, and you'll find this in the accounting department budget. The, we had some funds. the, we had some funds at MERS that are not vested, and they're contributions that the employer made on behalf of employees while they were here working, but they didn't work here long enough to get vested. So those funds sit there. We originally paid them. The employee hadn't reached their vesting period yet, so we are able to pull those back, if you will. And that amounts to eleven thousand dollars. It's a new, something you probably have not seen since you've been on the board, so I wanted to specifically mention that. We also reduced the clerk's budget by a fair amount, twenty-one thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-three, not two thousand and twenty-four, because there were no elections to speak of in two thousand and twenty-three. The East DDA fund, the East DDA approved these budget amendments back at their October meeting with also a recommendation that the Board of Trustees adopt those same amendments. You'll see there several large dollar amounts that were moved from twenty-three again to two thousand and twenty-four. Some increases in the water and sewer revenues that were due to some, basically one-time. It's hard to predict. For instance, the connection fee, we recognized thirty-three thousand additional dollars for that line item due to several large projects, the jail. Maury Court might have been one of them, or no, not that one. Then we also saw increases for similar to jail, Mid-Michigan College, a couple of large projects that generated some, in the case of the water fund benefit fees and the sewer fund, some connection fees. I think those are the main details I wanted to point out. I think in all cases, we were adding to fund balance in all the funds compared to the existing budget. There's many other, I think, line items that are being amended, the details in your packet. The report begins on page fifty-two of your agenda packet. There's a memo that summarizes the detail that's also in the report, and you can get down into the line item detail if you care to look. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On the sidewalks that are moved to next year, why aren't we able to do them this year? And are we gonna be able to get them done next year?
It's a good question. We weren't able to get them done this year primarily because of, I'll say, lack of internal resources to manage all that. And it's possible that we could have the same issue next year. Mr. Nanny, would you like to speak to that a little bit more specifically, please?
The, I would agree certainly. Internal resources are a limit. In some cases, easements continue to be a limit. Most of these projects that were part of the East DDA also were hampered in one form or another by the road construction. They weren't sidewalks on M20, but they were sidewalks coming either north or south of M20, for the most part, either on Isabella Road or Bud Street. And so there was also that element. But I think the primary issue simply is time constraint limitations on the resources to manage a number of projects. We had other sidewalks that were constructed, simply not in the East DDA.
So are we able to contract those out so we can get somebody on the outside to manage them?
So we have Gordy Fraser, our township engineering consultants. They are currently working on plans for those sidewalks to have them bid in early two thousand and twenty-four.
Excellent. Thanks, just wanted to clarify, and I appreciate that. Sorry if you'd already answered that at another time.
I have a general question. I hope it's on topic enough. And I just didn't see specific line item for it, which is fine. I may have overlooked it, but pump station one is, have we largely paid for a lot of that at this point?
Yes, we are holding some retainage right now, but it's, the majority of it's paid for.
That's a big deal.
Yeah. Yeah, the station's been online since the end of August, very end of August, and...
I knew for a while, we weren't sure we were getting all the parts we wanted, right?
Yep, we finally got everything. We waited almost a year on Consumers Energy to take power into the new location.
That's awesome.
Yeah, congratulations on that one.
Yeah, we were happy to get that project done.
So where that came from is I was looking in the sewer to see if that was, some of that was being carried, and I didn't see that necessarily, so that's where the question came from. Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Perfect.
Motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment number five for the general fund, East DDA fund, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Sewer Fund, and Water Fund.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills. Just to comment, I think we as a township do a great job of making these amendments throughout the year. I mean, it is just best practice kind of thing. And it's, I appreciate all the work that everybody puts into making that happen.
It's great, this detail is amazing.
Any other comments? We have a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment number five. This is not a resolution, correct? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment passes unanimously. That brings us to item B on the agenda, the one-year extension being proposed for the fire protection agreement with the city of Mount Pleasant. Mr. Stuldry, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you. There's a report that begins on page eighty-five of your agenda packet. Back in two thousand and eighteen, the board approved a five-year service agreement with the city that expires at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. There is a clause in there that allows for extensions, and we're taking advantage of that clause now. This is a one-year extension that's being recommended. The amount of the contract for two thousand and twenty-four is eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. That's a one percent increase over the two thousand and twenty-three contractual amount. You may recall me mentioning that the city is having a fire service study done, and they expect that to be done in two thousand and twenty-four, once that's received, and we'll receive a copy as well. There'll be discussions about what it means to the city, if anything, if they wanna make any changes, other than their own city residents. We're the next largest client, customer, if you will, of that service. So we'll be intimately involved in those discussions. And it's anticipated that there may be some resolution or conclusions of that by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. May go into two thousand and twenty-five, but at any rate, this one-year extension allows us time to see if that study has any impact, and if so, how we would create the appropriate service agreement to continue those services.
And one percent is a steal.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to consider approval of a one-year extension of the fire protection agreement with the city of Mount Pleasant.
Support. Motion by Brown, support by Smith. I'll just piggyback on your comment. We're actually, in many ways, paying less next year than we were this year.
Exactly.
Right. So, any comments on the motion that weren't already made? This is a resolution, correct? It is not.
It's not a resolution in the sense of a formal standalone document.
For some reason, I thought I saw that earlier. But with that, all in favor of the motion to approve the one-year extension fire protection agreement with the city of Mount Pleasant, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven C on the agenda, emergency township manager succession, policy governance two point eight. Mr. Stuldry, this is yours, so if you'd like to introduce, I'd appreciate it. And I did note your recommendation of modification in policy.
Thank you, there is a report on page ninety-one of your agenda packet, policy two point eight. The wording of that, one paragraph long, maybe one sentence long. "In order to protect the board from sudden loss of township manager services, the township manager shall not operate without a written plan identifying no fewer than two other named executives familiar with board and township manager issues and processes." I interpret that to mean that there was something unexpected, unplanned, that happened to your existing township manager, in this case, it's me, that I was out of service for an extended period of time, that there's a policy in place that can guide the board in terms of the succession while the board figures out what they wanna do next. The current succession policy was adopted by the board in November two thousand and nineteen. It's attached. What I try to do throughout the year is expose the executives that are on the list to things that I deal with. You'll see them being named acting township managers with the full authorities that come with that. They'll sit in this chair during township board meetings. I do recommend one change to this. Currently, the policy language says that you would appoint a position, individual with one of these titles, in a particular order within this policy, and I found that to be a little constraining, if you will. So that's being changed, or recommended to be changed, from just simply the list of the positions that are below. And those positions are the department heads, public services department director, finance department director, community and economic development department director. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
That seems reasonable to me.
Yeah. And a good idea.
I was kinda surprised we hadn't brought that up before, but yeah, I appreciate the recommendation on that.
Is this something we have to do to make that change, or is it just, we're good with it?
Motion, just said to approve.
Good with it?
Do you feel you need a motion to make that change in the policy?
Since we are changing it, yes.
Okay.
Why don't we have the motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to make the change as listed in procedure for succession from the list positions below, and we're scratching out according to the following line succession.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills. Any other discussion on that? All in favor of the motion to make the modification to policy two point eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion to modify the policy two point eight passes unanimously. Any other questions or comments on the succession?
No, sir.
And I know we don't have a form for it, but as always, manager interpretation, it's important that we look at that. Any issues with that?
No.
Any reason to think that we're not in compliance with that?
Absolutely.
From our perspective, I would agree. Any last comments? Seeing none, moving on to item eleven D on our agenda. Might I recommend that, I know it's maybe a little late, I should've suggested this earlier, D and E are kinda presented together in our packet. So I'll announce, I guess, if it's, if there's no objections, we're gonna take on new business D and E.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
With that, I don't know if you have anything you wanna introduce on this?
I do not on this one.
So we have both three point eight, point three point nine in front of us, both, just for public, in case you're not seeing the packet, have to do with policies regarding committee use within the township. We have used committees in the past. We don't, I don't believe this board has any current standing committees. We did have a sustainability committee some years ago. Planning Commission has their sidewalk committee, but that's under their authority. But it's good policy to have, so in case we need to stand up a committee, we have a guide on how to do that and what the constraints are of that committee. So with that... So when you all read through three eight, three nine, any comments in general before I ask our questions? So you have any reason to believe this board is not in strict compliance of three point eight or three point nine?
No.
No.
No. So no objections there?
No objections.
Anything we need to do as far as modifications to the policy, any?
I think we adjusted it last year, didn't we?
This one? I don't recall. We might have. You probably have a better memory than I do.
I don't.
Any modifications, anything we need to do better? I mean, like I said, right now, this board doesn't have standing committees, so...
I'm happy with the policy.
Me, too. So we're good to move on?
Yes, we are.
Thank you all. That brings us to item eleven F on the agenda, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget recommendation discussion. Just for the purpose of informing the public, this is, we've had prior meetings on this, two meetings, and one was an introduction of the proposed budget. The last meeting, we had some more in-depth discussion, so this is our third opportunity, plus the public hearing we had at the beginning of the meeting. So with that, this can be fairly informal. We'll just kinda open up the floor on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget recommendation.
I have no questions. I think it was well done.
Mr. Stuldry, do you have anything you wanna interject on this, since our last meeting?
What do you do?
Not that I expect anything, but feel free.
No, I do not. Thank you.
So again, for the public's purposes, we did have questions regarding this last time. Are there any additional questions or comments or concerns?
No.
I have none. I do not have any.
When trustee Theron notified me today that something had come up, personally that he had to take care of, he did share that he had no issues with the proposed budget, so he asked that I share that with his board.
And I'm not gonna be here for the December thirteenth meeting, for which this would be finally approved, and I'm in full support of it, even though I won't be here for the vote.
Agreed, me, too. I'm not gonna be here, and I also support the approval of this budget.
It could be done tonight.
That's obvious.
Yeah, because the only one that's missing already said he's approving. It's fine, just wait. Why wait, though? Doesn't it say in it that it's the final one? It's on December thirteenth. No, it has to be approved by the end of the year.
By.
By the end of the year. And we've had our public hearing, which is one requirement.
I didn't catch all that.
The proposal is that we go ahead and approve the budget now.
Can't do it.
Can't do it. Because...
You have to conduct, well, we did conduct a public hearing.
We did.
Yeah, I was thinking we did that earlier.
There's no reason you cannot. I would like to point out, though, when you asked a minute ago, and I know it's been apparent in the... him a minute ago, uh, and I know it's been apparent in the, in the memo, but I do, I do want to, uh, I guess, repeat that this budget, the staffing is always a question, that this budget contains, um, a request or recommendation to reclassify one position in the water department and to add a new position in the sewer department, and those are being done and recommended, um, to help with maintain current service delivery, and then, as much as anything, prepare us down the road from a, uh, transfer of knowledge perspective, because we do have some, uh, anticipated retirements maybe over the next few years. And I'm only bringing that up because we have not had any discussion on that specific topic, and I just know that personnel is often discussed at the board level, so I didn't want to just brush that aside.
You brought it up last.
Yeah, yeah, you did mention it.
You did bring it up.
It may have been at the first.
Thank you. We did talk about it.
When you rolled out the initial one, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember you talking about it.
And it makes total sense, especially with what's going on.
For sure.
In most other municipalities, they can't find people, and it's just fortunate that you're being proactive.
Yeah.
To kind of keep those departments.
Good foresight.
Operational and well-run.
And just for my clarity, what I remember from the discussion on that was increasing the classification in the water, and then you mentioned adding the position in the sewer, that's essentially a mere structure in both funds.
I think that'd be a fair statement.
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
Yeah, so we're trying to make the sewer kind of catch up a little bit with.
Titles are a little different, but I think operationally, that's a fair statement.
Clerk Cody had her hand raised.
Yeah, Clerk Cody.
Oh, don't we normally do the budget approval via a resolution?
We do.
Oh, you do?
So we need the resolution to do that.
Be nice to have, wouldn't it? We do have the proposed resolution in the back.
Yeah.
I don't have my book on, so.
It does say dry.
I was going to say it's on, uh.
Let me ask you.
Electronic copy.
Would the board prefer to kind of move that direction, or are we?
I'm fine adopting it.
I would rather wait, but that's.
The only way, the only reason I'd like to say adopt it tonight is we get the more votes tonight than we do December thirteenth, we have more, more votes.
Six is opposed to five.
Yeah, I mean, we have one more vote, which I, I like for the budget, personally.
You have no objections from your perspective?
I don't see a problem.
I'm just looking at it real quick.
Yeah, there, there, there should not be a problem with that. You don't have the resolution in front of you, maybe it's, at least some of you, some of you do. I would just suggest that you reference the resolution that's in the recommended budget book, and that you include some language that allows the administration to change the resolution, the ministerial aspects of it, for instance, the agenda in your packet, the resolution in your budget book references that it was approved on December thirteenth. I pre-printed that in there, because.
Yep.
So if you could craft a resolution along the lines of, I move to adopt the, adopt the FY twenty twenty-four general appropriation resolution as found in the recommended budget book, giving the township manager the authority to update those ministerial sections that had to do with dating. Something like that.
So move.
I was just gonna.
Why, why repeat it?
I was, I was just gonna say that, Brian, so that's funny.
You got it all?
Support.
Was that a support? Uh, we have a motion by Smith, you said it really quick, too, I was impressed.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, support by Bills.
What was that?
I think this is the first, anytime I've been on this board, that's never been approved before the December meeting, so, um.
Gotcha.
And I think we're all agreeance with it.
I'm not, really, no.
Trustee, trustee Theron was.
We're just pulling it out, it's not in the packet, people can't just look it up and see it, if it's in that other packet, we like stuff to be on the agenda, going instead of just sliding it in there and be like, oh, they approved their budget when they had their open meeting, I'm just saying it's, doesn't look right.
Nobody came to the.
I know, but when you're pulling up the minutes, you're pulling up the packet to look at it for reference in the past, it's going to be really confusing.
I don't think it is.
It's a valid point.
I'm just saying, when I'm looking at something and it's not on the packet, it's harder to find than, and, and I'm talking about from like twenty years back or something, when I'm trying to find something and it was just thrown in there, it's harder to find.
To that point, you might want to consider before you approve that resolution motion, if you're inclined, is to go back and amend your agenda to include approval of the FY twenty twenty-four appropriation resolution.
Yeah, that way it's on the front of the agenda.
Would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes, sir.
To include that?
Yes.
And we can do it at once, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Can we do it at once?
I wouldn't do it at once.
Just because it's a resolution and emotion.
Somebody else want to make a motion?
Will you withdraw your?
I keep mine right now, and, but then just do the agenda resolution.
Well, we need to, we need to do the motion that, that we're on right now before we can go back and make another motion.
Put it on the agenda first.
We, yeah, we, we do have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, is what I'm getting at, unless you retract, unless you retract your motion.
I'll pull it, I'll pull it then.
Withdrawing?
Okay.
We're good to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I've heard everything correctly, I, I believe someone will want to make a motion right now.
I would like to make a motion to put the two thousand twenty-four, uh, approval of the, on the agenda.
Budget resolution.
Uh, budget resolution on the agenda for the November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Rice, everybody clear what's going on?
Yeah. And it's a G, so it's in the.
Does this help you feel, feel better?
You good? All right.
All right, so we have a mo- we have a motion to amend, uh, today's agenda.
Call vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Our agenda has been amended to add the, uh, general appropriations resolution to, to be open to motions if we chose to choose.
Like, put the motion back on the table that was previously stated, and the approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four general appropriation resolutions with all the other items at market.
The date changing to eleven twenty-nine.
Yes, with ministerial changes.
So, motion by Smith, support by Bills. Terry, you're, you're good getting all this now, right?
Yeah, I get it.
It's all mud, it's all mud.
All right.
All right.
Uh, any further discussion on this?
No.
Would you do a roll call of the board, please, Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Cody?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Stuhldryer, thank you to all the directors and everybody involved in, wow, getting it done in November, I guess.
Thank you, you're the board.
So we will need, uh, trustee Smith and trustee Bills to put their signatures on that resolution, correct?
Yes.
So before you leave town?
Yeah, I'll be around.
Yeah.
Make a point.
We'll get that.
Form for signatures tomorrow.
Okay.
Excellent.
As well make sure you both had an opportunity to.
Yeah, I'm not leaving town.
Okay. Uh, we just finished item G, I believe it was, on our new business, and F. With that, any further comments before we go to extended public comment?
Nope.
Uh, we'll open up extended public comment, item twelve on our agenda at seven fifty-three P M, if you choose to address the public, uh, please state your name and address for the record, uh, any comments are, can be on anything, but limited to five minutes, and with that, seven fifty-three P M.
There's nobody in the waiting room.
So let the record show, no one was attending virtually, nor coming forward, uh, in person, and with that, we'll close extended public comment at seven fifty-three P M. That brings us to item thirteen on our agenda, manager's comments, Mr. Stuhldryer.
Thank you, uh, first is a reminder that next Friday, December eighth, Gordy Frazier and Associates is hosting, uh, an appreciation luncheon at Jameson Hall, everybody's been invited, and in one of those communications, I suggested that unless there was, uh, any pushback, which I haven't heard, that the Township Hall would be closing from eleven forty-five to one thirty, so everybody could attend, just wanted to point that out. And then, this last item, I want to let the board know that there's a meeting that, uh, I have scheduled, and we're going to be meeting informally with representatives from McGurk Sand and Gravel and respective attorneys, this meeting's going to be held in mid-December, I think it's December twelfth, and there's, we're meeting for two reasons, one, some of you may recall that back in two thousand and eighteen, um, that entity initiated some, uh, legal action against the township that had to do with the site plan for the, um, self-storage area over there, and that had some components to it, uh, screening and some other things, and, um, I don't really recall all the details, but there was also a claim by the, uh, plaintiff of some, um, violations of certain civil rights, uh, that was made against the then township supervisor, and so we ended up in a formal legal action, as a result of that, we ended up in mediation at, um, suggestion of the judge, so we entered into mediation, we reached an agreement that was codified in a mediation agreement, further codified in a settlement agreement that referenced the mediation agreement, and that mediation agreement called for the installation of sidewalks along the front of what is now Dozer's, um, ice cream shop and sandwich shop, and then around the corner on Lincoln, heading south towards the river, and that mediation agreement required that sidewalk to be installed by a certain date, and there were two other conditions that were, um, out there, that, um, if not, if those conditions were not met or whatever, then there was a date when that sidewalk had to be installed. That date has, I believe, come and gone, and so we have reached out to, uh, McGurk Sand and Gravel to have a discussion about, uh, finishing up that work in order for us, um, and, and, and we're doing that because our, the alternative to enforce the mediation agreement, because it was a case that was initiated in federal court, is we, in order to enforce that mediation agreement, we would have to initiate on our own action in state court to enforce what amounts to, in the legal sense, is a contractual deal, so we can't go back to federal court and have them enforce what now is a contractual requirement, so we'd have to bounce over to state court, and so prior to initiating that action, we asked for a meeting and, uh, to discuss when that is going to go in, um, so that we don't have to file an action that we've already written up and that we're ready to file, um, so we're hoping to do something to resolve that situation, so I wanted to alert the board of that, because, you know, in the past, that was, a case was a big deal, and, you know, we went to court, we defended it, we decided to try to settle it through our mediation, and, uh, we did, and now we're looking for the, uh, plaintiff to.
Hold up their end.
Hold up their end of the deal. And coupled with that is a conversation that we want to start with the same entities as it relates to the property on Broomfield and Lincoln. That property, as you know, is, could use a little bit of TLC and other things, and, so again, before we initiated any formal enforcement action on that property, we thought it made sense to try to sit down with the parties and see if we could figure something out, so that's what we're doing on the twelfth, and, um, none of that is legal matters, it doesn't require closed session, and because of the nature of both subject matters, I want the board to know that I'm doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. Uh, it's just sad that, sad.
So thank you, that concludes my comments.
Very much appreciated. Uh, any other comments or questions for manager? I hope that goes well for you. Probably best for both, all parties.
Anticipate it will, let's just see.
Uh, with that, that brings item fourteen on our agenda, final board member comment, uh, we'll start with Clerk Cody.
I have a couple of them, so, um, the nine-day early voting, we'll be mailing out notices saying where it's at, when it's, you know, the times, dates, and that will be December, but there's about, what, seven thousand five hundred going out? And then for the elections coming up, we have the nine-day early voting center, we have an absentee, and most our voters vote absentee, like, more than half, I think, but with that being said, they changed the law, so now we can have five thousand people, or four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine people per precinct.
Yes.
So I would like to bump it down to two precincts and one absentee, so I'm working on that right now, but it will have to be done at our next meeting via resolution, I just wanted to know how everybody feels about that.
Great.
What was important to me, um, I think is worth, can I share some details? Is we currently have the three voting precincts, uh, as they stand now, it's Commission on Aging, uh, Township Hall, and then Jameson Hall, um, and my concern with that was, well, Commission on Aging's not a township building, the other two are, and these two are right next to each other, and so I, I asked our clerk, um, where are you thinking of these precincts, and your reply to that was Jameson Hall and Township Hall, so the nice thing about that is it brings us to our own facilities, and it is on two separate sides of the township. That was important to me.
Yeah.
Well, it's good, and, it's good.
It make, yeah, it made full, great sense to me, especially with the nine days early voting and absentee, we're seeing less and less people vote on, uh, actual election day in person.
Yeah, excellent.
And, and know that our clerk has to do quite a bit of work to make this happen, so.
Yeah.
We can pat her on the back.
I got it.
Well, it's, it's, you know, I, if I were doing it, I'd rather do the absentee ballots than have all those people show up in person, you know, with all the confused, you know, how do I do?
Some people like to pull that lever, I guess, too. Thanks for taking that on.
They can go to the casino and pull the lever now.
I was going to say.
Good one. Uh, let's see, are you all good, Clerk Cody?
Yeah.
Thanks for undertaking that, too, by the way, um, trustee Brown?
Yes, uh, just one thing, I'd just like to lift up the staff again on this two thousand twenty-four budget and the work that was put into it from the manager all the way down, um, excellent work, um, that's all I, that's all I have to say on that.
Trustee Bills? Trustee Bills?
Since this is my last meeting of the year, I'd like to also say thank you to all of the department heads and manager Stooldryer for a great budget, and I'm looking forward to getting some sidewalks done next year, too. Happy winter solstice, happy Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everyone in the township. Thank you very much.
Great job on the budget.
Treasurer Rice?
I also wanted to say I love our new postage meter. You will find on the new bills this year, there is a little greeting. So on the mortgage-only documents, you will find it says for your records on there, just another way to reiterate. So hopefully we don't get those phone calls again, and just one more step of trying to
That's cool.
Communicate with, with everybody, so I love that, by the way. And also, the parade of lights is on December second, so on Saturday, so be sure to go check it out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
All right, I don't have much to say, but get better.
Thank you. I am so ready to be better.
Enjoy your trip.
But it's no longer pneumonia, so.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas to you, while I can say it now as well, and to trustee Smith. I'll say it to the rest of you next month, so. And with that, our, our business is concluded.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Brown, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned at eight oh five P M.
Woo-hoo.